Microphones are out. So Kate. I'm going to port Kate into the main. Okay, we're going to bring you into the van body. I just want to make sure that I can hear you and we can see you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Happy in business.
Okay, you can take yourself off of. Off the video off of you. I just wanted to make sure you can hear us. We can hear you.
That's.
Hey Kate.
Hey.
Well, everybody can hear Kate, okay?
Hi Kate.
Hi.
So those of you who aren't aware of the technology, what we're using is these two devices, these cylinders that are on the table, they're called owls. As you can see, the person talking is who the owls will focus on. So if you look like you're talking, you're talking, and we will focus on you. Be aware that the microphone is pretty sensitive. So if you're having sort of a sidebar, remember the meeting is being recorded. And they are very sensitive, right? And yeah, the cameras, I think, are in the domes there. So they're not the eyes. I think that's what's happening there. Okay. So Kate, you can hear us. Okay, Janelle, you're online. Can you hear us? Okay?
Yes, I can.
Anybody else online that the other just come from?
Uh, Janelle Lewis and things, and things outside the rest of the staff.
Okay, great. So we're ready to go.
We can call it.
Okay, that's good. All right. Good evening and welcome to the Max Monroe City Council meeting. This is a regular study session meeting for Monday, October 30th, 2023. The time right now is seven to five P M. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and start off by just going around the room for roll call. My and all I because there are so many of you just go ahead and state your name and what you the board of commissioners you serve on. So or if your staff, what your position is, and you were the same. So my name is Jeffrey Thomas, mayor for the city of Monroe. We'll go over here first, Deborah.
Deborah Knight, city administrator.
Lance Bailey, community development director.
Kelsey Dawkins, planning commission.
Liz Newt, planning commission.
Ron P. K. Fox.
Stephen Robinson, department chair.
Mike Farrell, Parks Recreation Director.
Rachel Adams, Stevens, for this.
Sacum Frey is executive assistant.
Jay Bull, planning commission.
Oh, me?
Tony Wyckoff, city clerk.
Uh, Jerry Goto, A B support.
Kyle Fisher, council.
James Perrin, government.
Good news, county.
Tony Love, Human Services Board.
In the County Council.
Jim Manford, council.
Randy Blair, planning commission.
Arlene Love, B D.
Kurt Starwell, council.
Jim Wallace, Human Services.
Amy Martin, parks.
Melanie Walkhart, planning commission.
Heather Folcher, council.
Jake Walker, planning commission.
Roger Bacon, Human Services.
Why not to the outer ring? I know that you're here. Go ahead.
Hello, Speaker Davis. We want to say, Richard, what you mean here in the.
Yeah. And then online, we have.
Kate Turtleow, planning manager for City of Monroe.
Janelle.
Janelle Lewis, planning commission.
All right. Thank you. We have a pledge of allegiance, but we have no flag. I'm sure you're up tonight. All right. Please let us on the bunch.
Glad to leave.
For which has one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, without tax.
Thank you. So we're just following through our normal agenda here this evening as if they're consuming. We do have an opportunity for public comments. So this is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council in any issue related to the city of Monroe, except for a project official matter that is subject to a public hearing. Three minutes are reported to you speaker. If there's somebody here that would like to speak for public comment, please raise your hand.
Hello, everyone. I'm Speaker Davis, the Minister of Monro, Minister of Monroe. I've been a deputy here in Monroe for the last 28 years. I just wanted to share with you that I did send an email for the council today and asked Hannah Meter to send it out to the planning commission as well. I'd just like to be involved with some of the planning decisions or getting input anyway regarding buildable lands here in Monroe. And I'm especially concerned with displacement and gentrification of neighborhoods. We need housing, and I think that there, I don't know, there are some things that are missing in the information that we received so far, so I'd like to hear you.
Thank you. Or anybody else that would like to speak? And if you're online, hit star nine. If you're on the phone or hit your race in button if you're on the attendees list. All right, saying none, we go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That's item number five, discussion items. This is five point one, twenty thirty four, twenty thirty four, conference of plan update, regulatory framework, Lance Bailey. So Director Bailey. Let it come on up. I'm going to go ahead and present. It's got a series of slides. And if if you have a question, just go ahead and raise your hand. I'll take note of it. And we'll call on you as we're as we're going through the presentation at logical breaks. So Director Bailey, thank you. Well, and thank you all for coming today. By the way, I think the I attended a meeting earlier this summer, and most everybody was online. It means a lot to me that everybody is here this evening. So thank you so much for coming. We saw this as a great opportunity to both thank you for your service, but also for us all to get together and see human beings in life space. I think we have a tendency to kind of forget when we're on video all the time, people we're talking to are real people. So thank you all for indulging me in getting to go this evening. All right, Director Bailey, you're up.
I was going to thank everybody for being here, so I will do that again. And I know that so we wanted to put this this group together, have a discussion about everybody's favorite thing, regulatory framework regarding conference and plan. But virtually, it'll be educational and entertaining. I know a lot of people have probably seen some, if not most of this before. But we wanted to reconvene where we've been working on the cop plan now for a little over a year. And we've got the majority of our background information put together. And I know that we've had a number of presentations to city council, planning commission, boards and the boards and and the vice, the commissions and advisory boards. And a number of people in this room are also on the C A C, the Community Advisory Committee. And we had formed that, just a little bit of background on that. So we formed that committee in order to have sort of informal liaisons to what is going on with the comprehensive process. So we've had one meeting. And the intention is that the votes, we have two members from each of the boards and commissions that are on the C A C. And the intention is that to have those members be able to go back to the to the groups and provide updates. Staff will also be coming to those groups as well. But if you have, if you have questions about things that are going on with the cop plan, certainly ask those members that are on the board of commission that you might be on, ask them questions. And if they don't have answers, they can even have the staff. So we've done this, we've done parts of this presentation before, but it it's it's kind of dense information, and there's a lot of entities that are involved. And before the next round, where we're going to be presenting the development scenarios that the we've developed through public input and consultants have been doing some modeling. So we'll be we'll be coming to the city. Well, we did a presentation on the draft with the planning commission on the 23rd of October, and we'll be going forward in November twenty eighth. And I'll remind you that before the end of the meeting as well. So just trying to give some background on how we're putting the comprehensive plan together before we start to come to the groups and actually start talking about policy language, so that you'll understand sort of a framework of where that's coming from. And I wanted to emphasize particularly this evening that this is a this company update is a little bit different than we did in the past for those that may have been involved in that. I imagine there's at least one or two people in this room that were, is there's been sort of an increasing amount of what I mandated elements that we're having to do with the comprehensive plan that are that are very new. And I'll talk about some of those today. And honestly, all the cities and counties are doing some of this work for the very first time. So we're we're kind of not necessarily creating it as we go a little bit with direction from the staff, and it comes from some regional agencies as well as as some state, some state law. And I'll and I'll go through that on tonight. And I apologize, I've got a little bit of a scratchy, a scratchy throat, so I have my trusty, my trusty hot tea here. So we could get a little bit.
And I have a different screen. I don't like mine for.
So this is you may have seen a number of different graphics that we put together that show all of the entities that are involved in sort of the flow of where the regulations for the comprehensive plan comes up with. And we're always trying to create one that looks less threatening. Maybe you've done it this time. I don't know. So it really starts with the growth management act, which is the G M A, probably from here, here, plus referred to that on a regular basis. G M A was state law that was adopted in nineteen ninety and as a result of a lot of growth and change that was occurring in the state. And it was a model that other states had had used. So it's state law, cities and counties are required to meet, are required to meet the the regulations within the the growth management act. And they've changed over time. So they certainly have changed since since nineteen ninety. We also have another, a number of other entities that have planning functions. Starting off with the Puget Sound Regional Council, which is a multi-county organization. One of their primary roles is in transportation. They're highly involved in a lot of the very expensive transportation projects that are happening somewhat outside of our area, but up and down the Puget Sound. So that's one of their big focuses, but they're also have have another focus within housing, and I'll talk about that in any more detail. So much county, which we're a part of, there's county, countywide planning policies that that we work with the county to to create, have modified over time. Those have changed a little bit. And we'll also we also work with the county in terms of our housing and employment allocations. Talking a little bit more details off. And then and then our comprehensive plan, the city's plan, and then the a little flow with with the yellow, with the yellow lines. That's really what we're we're probably dealing with with the group here on a regular basis. This is, this is our legislative actions, our code amendments, sub-area plans, the actual projects that we're doing, that's probably the most noticeable thing for the actual development on the ground. And it just put up on the top of the yellow box. And and I'll talk in a little bit more detail about this, that the one of the, one of the things that we're required to do is part of the comprehensive plan is that we have allocations for housing, housing units and jobs. And that's based on metrics that come from population growth. And some of the changes that have come from state law and 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 from the Puget Sound Regional Council as well, is how we allocate within that larger number of housing units that we are determined that we will need over over the next twenty year planning horizon. And and those numbers are, you know, currently we need to to look at adding two thousand four hundred and twenty three housing units and two thousand four hundred and one jobs. That's 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 kind of our task, to go through modeling and to come and to be able to show that we have the capacity to do that.
Just notice that online, they're not seeing what she's showing there. So Kate and Janelle were there. Okay.
What were they?
They were looking at.
They're looking at the agenda. They're still doing the pledge of allegiance.
Next slide, please. So this is, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on this, but just to, just to walk through some of the layers of of the regulatory framework. And as I mentioned, it starts with the growth, growth management act, which is state law. So there's a citation for the revised code of Washington, if you've ever wondered what R C W is. It's a twenty year planning horizon that we're looking at as far as the 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 update. We're revising comprehensive plan. And the implementing piece of the conference to plan is development code, which you probably see more of a result of that on the ground. That's the actual development that's occurring, applications that people are submitting, community development is revealed. And those need to be be consistent with each other. So when we're writing policies for the comprehensive plan, then we need to have implementing building code and development code that actually implements that. And we currently own a deadline for December of the end of this year, well, that next year, December thirty first of twenty twenty four, to be able to complete this work. And we are on time, which I have a slide that shows that. I'd be very anxious to see that as we as we are. So this just shows, hopefully you can see that anyhow. This just shows some of the elements. So the way the the way state laws is the G M A is set up is that there's different areas of that each city and county needs to look at. These are contained within what we call our planning elements. Next slide. If anybody has any questions, don't hesitate to interrupt, because I know I learned something all the time going through this, not necessarily when this information, because there's a, there's a lot to it. And so if anybody has questions, don't hesitate.
One right here.
Question? Yeah.
They're probably probably going to get to it, but I didn't I hear recently in a meeting that Monroe's growth is actually plateaued sort of at this point?
Well, we haven't had we haven't had a over time, the growth has been fairly consistent. We're not seeing growth like some of the other communities may in the Puget Sound, but but we are seeing growth for sure. I think it's in the range of somewhere between two and three percent a year, maybe more more around two, I think, two and a half. If somebody knows the the real number of that, but it's been somewhere in that range. But we've seen sort of peaks, like if you, for folks that that have grown up here, things like the frying being developed. If you look back over time, you you'll see a spike where that occurred, but over time, it's 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 been, you know, fairly low average.
Just a point of interest, Jen, this kind of gets to the idea that it's a particular plateau right now. Remember, their population includes people who live in the and so we, a number of people ended up leaving and going either different different places or were released back in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, I think. So while our population may have plateaued, remember that doesn't mean that people weren't moving here. That makes sense. You were the one that said. Did I say that now? Oh, I said plateaued?
You used the charm.
Okay. Cool. I said. We don't remember what I said.
And and actually, that that brings up an interesting point. When you look at the different cities that that we deal with in terms of the entire community in the event, the Department of Corrections is is one. And over time, they had periods where the population has gone up and down. And one result of that has been there's there's a for for a long time until recently, the city was was right at or had come up to the point where we were about twenty thousand. And there's some different there's some different requirements for a city that that is, that's twenty thousand. It's not a part of this conversation today. And we just passed that recently, and it had been the the Department of Corrections population had been going down about equal to the amount of population coming into new development and then their population raised a little bit. So we finally broke that twenty thousand barrier. It's a new area.
Any other questions for breakings?
Okay. So these are, these are the elements within the comprehensive plan. The ones on the left are required. All the cities and counties have to do them. The ones on the right are optional, and we have chosen, we have an economic development element that will be, that will be revised in Parks and Recreation. Parks and Recreation just recently adopted the Parks and Open Space Plan. And we will be adopting in the future. It's not required in any this, in this legislative timeframe, but we will be doing a climate change element that was as a result of state law from this past week. And subareas and neighborhood plans we have done, we haven't done one in a while, but maybe in the next twenty years, but not nothing that's been, that's only.
So we've got a question from Kate Turtleow.
Yeah, thank you. I was just going to add that the climate change is due in twenty twenty nine, so it doesn't necessarily have to be completed with this particular update, but there were certain changes regarding resiliency specific to public utilities that we will be looking at with this update. But the big picture climate change is not technically due until twenty twenty nine, and the state has assigned all jurisdictions required to do planning a certain pot of money. So we'll be looking into that after this is complete, most likely.
Thank you. Jake, Lance, can you expand on the subarea or neighborhood plan element? optional element?
Well, it's it's a trying to think of an example. Well, the the North Kelsey is a sub area plan. And and those are, those are things that the city can initiate so throughout the town, the downtown as well. So there's, there's been a variety of a variety of this. So it's just, you're just looking at a defined geographical area that you have an economic development or a housing or affordable housing. There could be a number of different parts, conversation, conservation areas could also follow that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So this is like, this is what's changed since twenty fifteen. And I imagine the folks in this room could probably put a list together of things on the ground that have changed. The regulatory environment has also has also changed. There's regular amendments that get made to G M A to to address emerging issues. The Puget Sound Regional Council, which I mentioned before, multi, multi-county organization, have adopted their vision twenty fifty, which is like a very large regional comprehensive plan. And there's requirements in there that that cities and counties need, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. The amendments to the So much County Countywide Planning, Countywide Planning Policies, which the city is is a part of those as well. Development in Monroe that we see happening. The city adopted a new unified development regulation chapter, which pulled together a number of different chapters that had to do with different development regulations into one. We adopted Imagine Monroe, which is, which is really a, I should have said at the beginning, an umbrella for what we're, we're doing with the comprehensive plan. And if you, if you read through the the language and the vision statement for Imagine Monroe, the intention, particularly when we're coming back for policy statements and and policy changes within the cop plan, we'll be going back to Imagine Monroe to make sure that we're keeping in mind that vision that we set and are the policies that we're adopting or modifying consistent with that vision. And we, and the new population employment targets that are set for twenty forty four, which were those employment or jobs and housing numbers that I mentioned before. So those, those are allocations that we that the that the city that are generated for the city. I would make that, you know, very clear that it's it's the city is involved in that process, but but ultimately those are said and and it's they're looking at population housing and housing and employment allocations for all the communities within the region. So it's it's really interested in that. And you can, if you go to vision twenty fifty, it 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 shows that framework and that concept, but it is for some of the larger communities, it can be a little bit more complicated than what we, than I think what we're addressing in terms of just raw and operate. So here are the major elements for this for this update cycle. And this is what we've been working on since twenty twenty two. Making sure that the plan is consistent with Imagine Monroe that I just mentioned. Some of the new elements that are required is to is to start to address the social justice and equity issues which are, which were coming out of both G M A and the P S R C twenty fifty document. And I'll talk a little bit more about what that looks like, or at least the data that goes into how we're developing that. And I think that that'll make sense in a little. And then housing, I mean, it's I don't think anybody here is surprised to to see that we're, that housing is one of the prime things that we're trying to address. It's happening not just in this region, but really across the state, affordability, the, there's housing shortage across all income range, really. And the cities are a little bit behind in terms of meeting those housing numbers. And and there's been some push at the state level to adopt legislation that is that is applicable to the to the local jurisdiction. So there, there are things in terms of housing. And to give you a really simple one is all, all the cities in the in the state of Washington are now required to allow two eighty use on residential properties. And that's something that will be changing in our our development code. There's, there's other higher requirements for cities of the higher population. And I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about that, but you probably hear the term middle, missing middle housing or middle housing, which really refers to duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and sixplexes. And some of the cities that are that are above twenty five thousand population are required to to allow all of those housing types within their residential zones. Us being below twenty five thousand, we're only required to do duplexes. But it wouldn't surprise me if that population number comes down maybe in the next legislature, I don't know. No questions about that. That's the big.
Sorry, with regard to the the state kind of being dissatisfied with maybe housing supply growth, is there any conversations happening at, you know, the county or the state level about U G A and the limitations on that side by the county? It's like a loosening of of those rules or.
And and there's a process to expand the U G As. And there are a number of U G A expansion proposals that are being considered by the county as a part of their comprehensive plan update. And yeah, I mean, it's, there's, there's a lot of consideration of is, are the U G As are are setting those lines? And so for, you know, urban growth areas, which is really where within those, within those boundaries is where urban level housing, urban level development is really intended. And it goes along with the provision of services, roads, water, sewer. And some argue that setting those limits raises the price of land and limits the ability to build. The other side is, is, is it more appropriate to have density where you have services and you're you're trying to prevent sprawl? So that when you look out in the county, you might have, I mean, is the development, we're putting one house on quarter acre or half acre, they're really going to meet that that how? I'm not going to pretend to answer that question, but there's, there's, there's going to be some of the stats about them. We're in the city, so we we're, we're within that planning area that is that's intended to have more dense development. We have services, water and sewer, which is what we really need. We have services, water and sewer, which is what we really need to be able to, to build density. So that's, that's what our focus is here in the city.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
This is just, I just wanted to show what. The actual numbers when we're looking at allocations and capacity. And so the, the, one of the things I think that's important to understand is that. When we go through this exercise and, and as, and as you, as we, as we go, you know, and start to look at the draft development scenarios. It's the allocation, we need to show the capacity that we can be there. We can't predict with any hundred percent certainty exactly what's going to happen on each individual property. But based on our zoning, based on the amount of land that we have, based on the capacity for our services, water, sewer. Can you, can you meet those densities? And so those, those are the allocations that we are, that we will go through and model and, and need to show that we can meet. In order to have our, our plans approved or adopted by the state and, and then. Also reviewed for consistency with Puget Sound Regional Council as well.
I cannot see this chart from here, but looking at it today, and so on the housing, the two thousand and twenty census says how many housing units?
It is.
Six thousand, six hundred and twenty eight. And the goal for two thousand and thirty five?
I believe is nine thousand.
No, it's just.
Sixty five hundred.
Oh, which, what was the, the year?
Twenty thirty five.
Oh, thirty five.
Yeah, twenty thirty five. Thank you. I'm sorry. And so anticipating about three hundred units, right? So how many units have been coming in since twenty twenty?
We, we have a deficit. I don't know exactly what that number is, but we have, we have a deficit, a deficit for what that allocation.
My point being is that since two thousand and twenty, I think we have several hundred units coming in, housing units.
Oh, it's, it's, it's gotta be more than that.
And so that we're trying to go for two thousand and thirty five or sixty five hundred, did we already reach it?
Well, so the out, so what's, what that is showing is what the allocations were from the previous company. So the previous planning horizon took us out to two thousand and thirty five.
I see. I misunderstood. Thank you.
And so then, so the new out, the new, the new allocations, which are reflected in pushing that planning horizon out to two thousand and forty four.
Which is six thousand seven hundred? Thank you.
Nine thousand one hundred.
Okay, I was just looking at originally, you're seeing we're almost at the two thousand and thirty five projection.
Yeah.
But not past it.
Yeah, so it's, it, uh. It's, it's, I think it's important to keep in mind, so we're, we're always looking out, we're playing out for the twenty here horizon. But the last, but the last update took us out to two thousand and thirty five. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. I'm afraid.
We try to stay ahead. I did want to point out, I think Kate, Kate mentioned it. Before, just on the bottom of that slide, I can see that it does mention that there, there is a, we will be addressing. Resiliency and climate change in regards to our utility planning. I mean, one of the, one of, we talk a lot about housing, jobs, economic development. But one of the other really underlying pieces of doing the comprehensive plan update is looking at our utilities. And we are, we're doing our utility updates at the same time as we're doing all of the, the land use. And not every city has done it that way. I think it's an advantage for us. And so really what we're, what we're doing is making sure that the projections or any of the growth scenario changes that we're proposing. Is realistic in terms of how much capacity we have for, for our utilities, roads, water, sewer and those. And there's been an increase in state law that's, that requires cities to look at resiliency and climate change. In regards to those, those utility investments, because if you think about how often do you. You don't, you don't read the recite sewer treatment plants very often. But if they're in, in an area where there's potential flooding or earthquakes or a number of different things. Luckily, ours is safe. I know of communities on the coast that are not in that position, where they potentially with a very small amount of. Storm surge or, or other climate change actions potentially might have to, you know, move and abandon sewer treatment plants, which. Was just not easy to achieve. So here's some of the new state requirements. And this is, this is one of the key pieces that we wanted to talk about or wanted to present to you tonight is just. These are the new things that will be, we'll be adopting new modified policies for in the comprehensive plan. And also adopting development regulations to implement the conference of plan. One of them is the middle housing that I talked about, that's a, those are requirements and, and that are coming from the State Department of Commerce. Racially disparate impacts in housing and policy, that's a Puget Sound Regional Council requirement. I'll talk in a little bit detail about what that is and show you some, some graphics that hopefully will help explain what that is. Another new requirement is that we need to be able to show within our, our housing allocations. We need to break those out by, by income. And they're based on what we call average, average, median income, AMI. You might see that acronym used a lot. And, and I've got a graphic that sort of breaks that out. And then there's some minor changes to transportation in critical areas. We're, we're, we're doing an update to our critical areas ordinance. And we thankfully don't have a lot of critical areas. If you look at. The main thing here would be flood claims and, and the majority of that are parks. So we don't have a lot of development or even proposed development that in those areas, which. Thankfully not read all of this, but just to show some of the changes, and I've referred to many of them already. That are embedded in state law. So this is, this is a large part of the work that we're doing with the comprehensive plan involves the housing element. And it's in, in response to a lot of these changes that the city had, is needing to be able to show a document. And to show that our, the conference plan is consistent with state law. And our development regulations are also consistent with the conference of plan. Middle housing options, which I've already, I've already mentioned. Some of the gaps in local funding and development regulations regarding the middle housing. And, and I already mentioned the ADUs, that's, that's been, that's sort of been an ongoing conversation at state law to. Cities have had a wide range of regulations regarding ADUs and ADUs, I think are viewed. By many as an easy, easier way to get some affordable housing to, to place them in areas where we already have developments. So we, we're seeing a little bit of an uptake, uptake in EDUs. Over the last year or two, and we're at a steady stream of requests for people that are looking. So they're probably going to see more of those around town. More changes. Um, this talks about RDI racially disparate impact. And this comes from recent legislation, House Bill twelve twenty. Which we may hear more about. It, it's requiring cities to document and to address. Impacts for, that are, that are, that are based on potential areas. I'll show a map that'll explain this better than I probably get the narrative of it. But looking at areas that are, that, that have racial diversity and there have been impacts with displacement. People being priced out of homes. And so the, we're required to document that and to also take a look at areas in the city, which may have a, a higher probability. Of that kind of displacement occurring and start tracking that over time. And I'll show you, I'll show you a map that, that it helps to explain how we get started on that. And then, and then looking at net policies that, that may lead to displacement. Displacement is hard to track, but we, we have, we do have data from. AHA, what does AHA stand for? I mean, somebody, it's.
Terrible housing.
So they've been, they've been working, they've been working on trying to develop data to help cities. Address these issues because it's not something that, that we've been tracking. And. It, it takes, it takes kind of a deep dive through some data to do that. Identifying the areas that are at higher risk. And then once you've identified those areas, establishing policies that potentially address, address that displacement. That's a new thing. We're learning as we, as we go along. And this just looks at. This sort of the basic, the basic framework for how we'll do that. And then we're in the process of, of putting together, putting this data together. Let's hold on my slide. Looking at background, I mean, this is something that, that our consultant is working on. Looking at the history of development and potential displacement in the city. To document that, putting together any of the community information that we maybe have not been gathering. Or we haven't been. Paying attention to in the way that we could, that would, that would indicate the, you know, displacement and the impacts on that. Looking at the impact analysis, doing our policy evaluation and then coming up with policies to address that. So that, this is, this is all work that we're in the process of doing. And that will be presenting that to the CAC in March. This is just the graphic that showed, that kind of breaks down to. Reemphasize this allocation which we can't emphasize enough. It is, it is a key piece of what, of what we're doing with the comp plan update. So what this, what this shows is that number that we referred to before is. I have the allocation, the twenty forty four target of nine thousand one hundred and thirty seven. Is actually broken out and if you can see that graph with the little blue portion at the top, that, that's, um. That's the portion that is within the UGA, so that's actually hasn't been annexed into the city. It's, it's, it's a fairly small portion, but it, it breaks that number out. Because there, you, you might see, if you're just looking at the city limits, that number of eight, three, seven, nine is used in some places. So just wanted to, to show how, how these add up. For inside and outside of UGA. And this is just presenting the, we've talked about. Allocation by income level. And so this, this, this breaks out the. The, the AMI that I was talking about, which is, which is averaging, average, median income. And so as you see in the lower area, so this, this would be the zero to thirty is a, someone. Or household that is earning less than thirty percent of the local day line. And then you move up, and as you can see, we, our allocation for the, really the middle ones, really from fifty to a hundred percent. We're meeting, we're meeting that allocation based on, based on, based on the numbers that we currently have, which it all. And, and then I mean, for, for housing at the higher levels as well.
Non PSH, PSH, that like supplemental housing, what does that mean?
It is.
Public supported housing?
I believe it is. Then public, public supported housing. Thank you.
Any other questions about this?
Which is why that one has two, why that one has two categories at the same level.
Any other questions about this slide?
Uh, can you explain that one thousand one hundred and eighteen? From one hundred and twenty plus?
So that, that is the allocation within the category of a hundred and twenty percent AMI. So that's twenty, that's, that's twenty percent, that's twenty percent over the, over the ABI. Am I doing the math right?
Yes.
Always correct me.
Yeah, and what's the AMI here, remember again?
It is, it's more than just, it's, it's actually a figure that comes out from.
What's the number that you used here?
I don't know.
Is it the high eighties?
It is. It is, it's around eighty six thousand.
A hundred percent AMI is eighty six thousand for a household. So is that number would be more allocated eleven hundred high value housing units that? Is that right?
Yes.
It just seems, yeah, it seems really interesting.
It, it is, it, it, what it, what it means is that when we, when we look at that over, overall allocation. And now you're breaking that, that number into the different categories. What the city needs to do is to be able to show that we can accommodate that.
Jody, can you move that box the, there you go.
And the other part is, it's also based on number of people, uh, people in the family unit.
Yeah.
So eighty six thousand might be for a family of three or four.
Yeah, so I just want, I just want to explain, so when the Growth Management Act, this is House Bill twelve twenty that was passed in two thousand and twenty one. And the state gave the Washington State Department of Commerce kind of the lead on. How do you figure out the formulas necessary to provide housing to all income segments of your community? Which they did. From there, they gave it to each county, because the county does a lot of the number crunching for the cities in Snohomish County as well as itself. And so they, our, our own city council, I gave you a couple of presentations over the summer. There were actually three different alternatives. There was alternative A. I can't even remember what they were called, but it was trying to figure out the best methodology for the. For the county in general that was most equitable. And so because Monroe already has a lot of housing that are meeting that thirty, well, thirty to eighty AMI. That's why at zero, one of the alternatives was looking at negative numbers. And so this is all formula, what I'm getting at is this is all formula driven based on. State analysis of income levels within Monroe that is then taken to the county level. And so if you, if you want to learn more, I highly recommend, and I can provide a link, going to the Snohomish County. It's, the document is, it's referred to HO five, which is one of the countywide planning policy. Reports that is required for the comp plan update. It's, it's rather confusing, so I'm gonna, I'd rather give you the straight information so you can go understand it. But that's, we, what I'm trying to get is, we did not come up with these numbers. They are allocated to us and there's a lot of formulas behind it. Sorry, that was a long explanation.
Thank you. I have a question. Just second. Did you, I'm sorry, did you have any other questions?
So basically what it sounds like is a formula is saying that. These are the numbers of housing units we need for zero to thirty and thirty to fifty, fifty to eighty, eighty to hundred, we're pretty much good. And then above that, we need the most.
Yeah, that's, that is the market rate. And again. I would be happy to provide more information or, or send you the link to HO five, the, the report. Because it breaks down what our city makeup is based on income, there's a lot of other factors. And the formula behind that, I can also provide that information.
Any other questions?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Tony, and then we'll go over to, and then to Jake. Just clarify for me, Kate, the average median income that is based on the Snohomish King County average median income that we use for everything else?
It's, it comes out of HUD and I feel like, I'm sorry, I'm a little, it's been a long day for me. I want to say it was the Puget Sound Region, it's not just Snohomish County. And this was a really big change for us between the two, twenty, two thousand and fifteen comp plan update. And what we're going through now, because the, it changed. It used to be the poverty level was the. The um, tool used for income. I'm sorry, go for it.
If it comes out, if, if the average median income coming out of HUD is based on the income in King and Snohomish County. That explains why it's so high, is because of the income in King County compared to Snohomish County.
That is correct, but the data does show that incomes in Monroe are higher than you might expect. And, yeah, 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 so.
Just clarifying, the average median income is based on HUD. Which is looking at King and Snohomish County. And that's the general, and also part of the fact is, is how many members are in that household. So that is another part of the factor. So anyway, thank you. Thank you.
Um, I just had a question. Do you have to meet all of this within city limits and the sprawl of us and around us? Doesn't count for any of this?
I'm happy to answer that Lance. So these are the numbers that are, that are assigned specifically to the city of Monroe. Snohomish County has identified um, allocations for areas within unincorporated Snohomish County. And they have broken it down by urban growth area, um, and different geographies within the county. So these, these numbers are specific to the city of Monroe.
So, so all the housing up above Chain Lake, where it's clear cut and all these boxes have been built, are outside the city, right?
Yeah.
So that also has.
It, it depends, it, so.
Some of it is.
The stuff that's sort of the city limits, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, I mean, those houses are attracting a higher income. So it should take some of the.
Any other questions here?
No, that's it.
Okay, Jake?
This is a clarifying question. So effectively, let's, let's pretend we have a figure of eighty thousand of the median income. And median household income, one twenty plus would be a hundred K household income up. Is that, that's the correct way of, okay.
Good.
Uh, yeah, I remember we went over this together in our human service board at one point. I thought it was really interesting. And the thing I want to point out is. Um, that, right now, this is, you know, based off of a, kind of a snapshot of the hell of me in Monroe. But those houses, I mean, you see it on Long Main Street where I used to live, you see it all over. A house can be increased in value substantially without any change to the square, size of the house or anything like that. So in the future, although you have a great stock of affordable, you know, relatively affordable houses. That doesn't mean that it will be there. Those houses can become more expensive. So. Uh, you know, if we, if, if this really is just the goal that we try to shoot for, it would be concerning to me. I, I think everyone knows that, you know, this is the requirement that we're having to kind of work with. That's one thing, but. One suggestion is maybe thinking about what. Some number you, you know, because these are the minimums, right? If you exceed these numbers, you, you can, you can exceed the number, you can't go below. And so for, for fifty to eighty, you know, eighty to a hundred. Um, having some place for a, for a, a goal, um, knowing that you're going to lose some of those houses in the future to.
Um, and, and I, I wanted to address the, uh. The model and the growth scenarios that, that this, that the city will ultimately have as a preferred scenario. Um, moving to fall within the number. So it's, it's, it's really not looked at as a.
Uh, interesting.
We have a cap on how much we can grow.
Yeah, that's the.
So that's one of the challenges with trying to develop more housing is if you've got a cap on which you can zone to grow. We can't create a surplus of housing that reduces the cost. Did I get that right, Lance and Kate? Okay, they're going like this. Okay. Any other, any other questions? All right, um, so we can certainly remember this conversation for if things are brought, when things are brought forward to your boards and commissions to. You know, talk about this a little bit more today. Um, all right, Lance, put it.
Next slide. So this is, this is just, uh, uh, just a look at, uh, this. This is just raw, you know, a general raw map that shows displacement, displacement risk map. Displacement risk map assessment. And this information comes from PSRC. If you go, if you go to their website, uh, you will, there's, there's interactive maps and you can actually look at. Data that's, that, um, is being developed for various cities. So this is where we start. So what the, this shows an area that is generally considered to be at higher risk or displacement. And it's based on income, it's based on, um, uh, racial, racial diversity. There, there's a number of, of, of data points that get put to, to, to generate this map. And I just bring it up to show, this is where our starting point is. Uh, when we do, when we're looking and evaluating our growth scenarios and we're trying to look at. Uh, displacement risk and try to measure that. We will, will be using these maps to, to overlay that. So this is, we haven't done that work yet because we haven't. We haven't actually selected a preferred growth scenario. So that's just. You will be seeing more of that, but this is the starting point.
Go ahead. So that's not actually an accurate map of the risk? Is that our whole city?
Oh, no.
I mean, it's a good portion of it.
It's. Are you looking at the yellow portion?
You're looking at the yellow portion.
I'm sorry. That was like.
Thank you.
And, and. To this half. Anything else?
No.
This conversation came up in planning mission and I, I think upon further research, that includes the prison population. In that, so. And that's the census tract.
Okay, anything else, Jake? Any other questions on this slide?
But that's the information that we will get from the SRC. And then we can look at, uh, things within that based on, uh. Local situations that, that may revise some of that. And so, so this, and I probably doesn't show up very well for folks on the screen, but this. This, the, the darker blue to the white is a scale that starts from, and, and it's a non, non Hispanic. White alone population. So the darker blue, um, was, is a higher percentage of non Hispanic. Down to the areas and, um, lighter blue and, and white. And again, this is, this is pretty much raw data that we get from the SRC. So that just, that just gives you an, an idea of like what, what we'll be using to evaluate as we do the, as we look at our, our food growth scenario. Let's skip this slide. Yeah, notice it.
We could done it.
Yes, good ones.
Kevin?
Lance, um, could, or. Yeah, is that the one? Could you stay on that slide, Derek Hughes? So. It's the way they're differentiating is non Hispanic. Versus. Hispanic, so it's like the Hispanics are one. Category and, and then everybody else is lumped into the non. Is that correct?
Based on the percentages of those two counties.
So, I'd like, that's Kate. Um, this is actually, this is actually based on US census data. This is the five-year. Uh, community survey. And because the ways the census data is collecting information now, you have. Race and, and ethnicity, which is the Hispanic component. So you have to ask both questions. And this is a compilation of them together, because it used to be, uh, back in the, gosh, two thousands. They asked the question differently, but now, um. Hispanic is treated differently. So we have, when they ask both those questions in the census. That is the information you get. You have to put it together to get, to se, to specifically segregate out. White, non Hispanic. And that's what this is showing.
Any other follow-up questions? This is not all the data.
No, it's not.
Right, so to be clear, this is, this is not all the data. This is just an example, right?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, Kate, your hands still up? Anything else? Okay, good. All right, anybody else in the room? Then we'll move on to the next screen. All right, EIS.
There it is. Oh, I put it in the wrong one. So the, uh, so the next step, did you go over the next slide? So one of the next steps that we're, that we will do is when, when the city, when the city adopted our last comprehensive plan. We did what's called an environmental impact statement, EIS, you probably maybe heard that term before. But it's looking at a variety of impacts, um, to potential activities. And so for, for this comprehensive plan, we'll be doing a supplemental to that, to the EIS that we did the last time, because. Um, some things don't change very fast, like geology, unless you're actually out there digging into it. Or doing something to it, it, it tends to be fairly, uh, static. Uh, um, at least in the way we measure human time. Uh. So one of the, one of the, the next things that we'll be doing is starting, is starting our, our EIS and, and. That will, we'll be evaluating, uh, the growth scenarios. Based on those impacts. And now if we could go to that other slide and. So these are, this, this just shows the, the categories that have to be addressed. Uh, within that EIS and, and understand that there's, you probably heard. Folks refer to SEPA analysis, which is generally more of a project level. So this is, this is trying to evaluate those impacts from a larger policy standpoint. Uh, admittedly, most of the focus of, of the supplemental EIS for us is going to be. Uh, more of the things on the right column, uh, land uses, critical areas. Some shoreline and particularly the population, housing and employment, looking at that growth and. And analyzing potential impacts for that, um, environmental health and, and public services and utilities, which is a, uh. A process that's been going on with a lot of, a lot of data analysis as well. So that's just, this is sort of the next step, um, for the city, just to give you that and. Slide, and you're almost done. So this, this looks at sort of the schedule or the, the sequence of how the, we, uh. The supplement EIS, we'll, we'll look at the land use scenarios, which we choose, uh, uh, preferred alternative. Typically, the way we do the EIS is we look at a, um, larger growth. Scenario so that we're, uh, evaluating. We're evaluating growth higher than what our preferred scenario might be, so that if we have to make changes to it, we're not. You want to go over rather than under on one of these things, that's kind of a concept. Um, and we'll, we'll analyze a preferred alternative and we'll issue a final EIS. And then I want to slide. Which would be very hard to read. And that, that is pretty self-explanatory, isn't it? We've tried to, we, we've, uh, so this is, this shows the, the schedule. Uh, the comprehensive plan update process and activities that will occur within that. But, but the message in here, we've, we've, uh, really tried to break it out with those white lines. That is, that is not by mistake. So we are currently, uh, moving into, or will be moving into quarter one of twenty twenty-four. Which looks at evaluating the, um, actually putting together some graph language, um, having finished up and, you know, and. Chosen what our preferred alternative is, which was scheduled. So we're, we're right in what we were looking at, schedule wise, so. But we, we will stay that way. And with that. Let's see, nobody has any questions?
Any, uh, questions for follow-up or stuff? Go ahead, Jim.
Kind of a overall question, I, just coming to mind when I'm looking at this. In the, in the planning, we're looking at diverse populations, population projections, population increases. Current measurements, future projections, numbers, income levels. Has, has, has the current planning been able to take into account? Sure to for unforeseen factors like climate migration. Immigration due to wartime displacements. Immigration enters Snohomish County, those kind of things.
We would be, I, I would, I guess the, the. Overall answer would be where we would measure migration based on population increase. Uh, at the city level, I'm not sure that we would be necessarily looking at the reasons for that migration. Uh, I think when we, when we're looking at displacement, uh, and. I, I've talked, I've talked to a couple of the, the boards about, and there's been some concern, and I, I think there was a discussion at, um. Uh, when we were presenting that, did, how do we measure this? So if we were looking at displacement and looking at policies. We would dig down deeper into trying to understand. Why that displacement is occurring. And as far as migration, I'm not sure we would be looking at that, like necessarily what's the reason that's driving that. Unless there was some. Upheaval that, you know, we needed to take into account, so.
Well, there's plenty of upheaval going on out there. Uh, I, I guess I wasn't thinking so much about. Planning at this late, but I mean, a lot of the numbers that you have to react to come from. Puget Sound Regional Council and so on and so forth. I would think at their level, they might. Be taking some of that stuff into consideration. What do you think? I mean, it's a fact of reality. I mean, they're here.
I think, you know, to your point, Jim, um, I don't know that a lot of people realize this, but we're given a number that comes from the Puget Sound Regional Council. That is a bunch of elected officials that don't represent us. So. You know, I don't know that people realize that there's this agency that comes up with these numbers, they get handed out to the. Um, to the counties, they then have a narrow band on how they can allocate that, and that's how we get where we are. So. Some of the things like that, generally we're bringing up, we just said, we're required to plan in certain numbers and, um, zone to those numbers and. Um, that's how we get where we are. And, uh, yeah. It's, uh, it's interesting. Uh, any other questions at this time? Good, Melanie?
Um, I know the city's made a lot of, um, great effort to get out to the community, going to all the events and stuff to get the feedback. Um, what, where are we at in terms of, like, demographically? Um, the feedback that we're getting back is, have we gotten diverse feedback truly, or have you seen kind of that we're. We're weighing heavily in one direction or another there?
That's, that's a great question. In fact, we, will we doing. A second round of, of public engagement. And I think that we learned a lot. Uh, in the first round of reaching out and, and how to reach out and. And what's the best way to get that feedback going to events? I will say, I, I think that. Um, in this next round, we're gonna, we're going to look at, or phase, uh. How to reach out to, and more to the Spanish-speaking community. I, 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 I think that that's, um, missing. From the conversation and how, how we do that. Also think that. Reaching out to business owners and, uh, and that population, and there's a lot of overlap in those two. So. That's, that's something that we, I think, we can do better at. And I think that we have learned. We, I think we learned a lot of positive things in, in the outreach. Uh, we got a lot of diversity. Uh, of the community, I think, just from, from the different events that we were attending and, and the survey. Uh, but we will be trying to make more of a, a specific focus for Spanish-speaking community for sure.
Kate?
I'd just say, um, if you, um, have gone to the web, the project website. There is a summary of all of the outreach that we did in the spring and summer, and there is a data point in there on. Um, who we spoke with. I would agree with Lance, the one population or group that we. Um, could do a better job on is our Spanish-speaking residents. Um, other than that, it is actually. Um, it's more diverse than I was expecting to see. So I would encourage you to go to the project website. Um, the summary is near the bottom of the page.
Thank you, Kate. Anything for the moment?
Um, and then I guess one more kind of part two of that question is because we're seeing that we have. Um, and then I guess one more kind of part two of that question is because we're seeing that we have a. A portion of the city that is at higher risk of displacement. And so are we measuring, like, as we get feedback from people in the community, are we uh keeping tabs on whether. Uh, people who are responding are in that area of the city that may be at higher risk of displacement?
We have some uh data on the location. If, if. If anyone had done the survey, there was an opportunity for people to say where they're located. Uh. I would say that it wasn't a hun- a hundred percent of the folks that were answering were necessarily providing locations. So it, it's there. I, I would, you know, there's a percentage of folks that were not having applied that.
Any further questions from anybody? Go ahead, Jake. Does anybody have any sort of like inventory of list of all the different HOAs in town? What was the question?
The answer is, the question was whether we have a list of all the HOAs in town.
You know, just seems like a really good way to access a lot of feedback. I recently learned that there's a lot more HOAs in town than I expected. Um, I'm like, wow, that's a. So the comp plan or any kind of these surveys, obviously, the limited set of just property owners, but.
Yeah, one of the things with the HOAs is they, they get formed um as a part of a subdivision process. And they, the city doesn't. Have any management aspects of the HOAs. And so as entities, they exist in a lot of different. Uh, I would say levels of activity, some of which are, they, they're not. Active at all. And but there's, there are still legal requirements that they have. Um, I'll give an example that came up, I believe sometime last year, people. Uh, some of the pathways that were built, particularly like in the Fry Islands, that's, that's the ones that I'm mostly familiar with. Uh, the HOAs are required to maintain those. And there's some areas where they haven't been. And uh, I think the, the city in some limited areas have realized that those pathways are important enough. That the city is going to um step in and and maintain those. But it, it, uh, you know, that's just, that's one example where.
Yeah, and the question's kind of based on, on this one, this kind of triggered the whole thing. An HOA dissolves, and a HOA in that common area, and now that that HOA is gone, does that common area become city land?
I, I will defer to the attorney who's.
Okay, yeah, I, I, yeah. I didn't know if any of you knew that off the top of your head, but I.
I, I could say something that may or may not be correct. It's, it's.
I was gonna say, Jake, I can follow up with you after this. I'll send you an email.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that I own a property that isn't an active HOA. And I think that's a really interesting idea because we have a website, the um, people that manage the HOA. Uh, could send out an email and it could all be approached as we care about you. We are in the middle of our comp plan. We want feedback. And I think that's an absolutely fantastic idea. It's sort of an, um, I never thought of that. I think it's great. And my question also was, how long are we taking public comment? What's the deadline?
Well into next year.
Okay, great. So there's time to explore that. I think it's great.
The, the next, the, that, that's a good question. The next, so uh, the, the process of doing the EIS will have a comment period. Um, in fact, the, the county um is, has just uh stuck, finished their comments on the, on their. Environmental analysis. And so ours, once we, once we put that out, it will have, I think it's a forty five day comment period. If the city decides to extend it. But for the overall pieces, the adoption of the comp plan, the, you know, the comment period is. Is open now. Um, it will be open until like the fully adopted, say, well, at the next year. Did anything further, Tim?
I just think that any new ideas to try and reach people, it's really important to think outside the box. We've had. Our, our public events, we've had the survey online. Um, I'm sure you visited business owners. And we've had our comp plan meetings, like at Park Place Middle School, but anything like Jake is suggesting, you know, I would just. You know, encourage everyone to really think about how we can reach these people that really need to contribute to this process.
Thank you. Um, we're gonna have a video in a little bit, if you are.
Didn't that contact for the HOAs come up with the trails plan? Isn't that something that has to be, if they're talking about trying to connect some of the trails? It, it would eventually end up probably from the HOAs and all the connects on these trails. I thought that was what we did at that.
I don't know, Mike Scott, he might have to defer to our.
Mike, have we been doing any outreach to the HOAs?
We, we, we have been and will, we will continue to communicate with HOAs, yeah, on the trails plan. So as you mentioned during her.
Anything for the. Does anybody else have any questions at this time?
See, is the trail survey still open?
Yes, it is.
Speaking of getting messages out.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, so, did you have anything for this?
I just two things, uh, for upcoming meetings, uh, that will be looking at next steps. Uh, particularly the, the development growth scenarios. Uh, yeah. Our consultants are having a, a meetings, public meeting with uh, with city council on November the twenty eighth. And the CAC is meeting on February four.
December fourth.
I'm sorry. When I said that, I, I was like, that was. The fourth sounded right. Thank you, Ben.
So this was a big deal for us. We're, you know, with the Community Human Services Advisor Board, the Planning Commission, the Parks Advisory Board. The Economic Development Advisory Board, we, we have all of these entities here that focus on different aspects of community. That make, you know, advisory decisions that go to staff, me, and then also to the council. So. I really want each of you to be engaged in this process because you're, you're setting a blueprint for the next, what, for twenty fifty. And it's important that each one of you at, at this time looks at those things that may seem really sort of academic. Because, you know, you're, you're talking math, twenty, twenty seven years in the future. Um. So just really engage with this. I, I know it seems kind of weird because you're talking AMI and XYZ and. EIS and CIPA and RCW and numbers and stuff. But all of these things, when it comes time for people to live here. When it comes time for people to recreate here, to have jobs here and so on and so forth. This seemingly academic exercise means something. Okay, so please engage in this. If you've got any questions about it, ask them. You are novel planners here. I don't expect everybody to understand what an AMI is or what a UGA is or. Why we do this, but we don't do that or vice versa. Ask questions, get engaged in it, okay? So um, I think that's, that's my plug there. Oh, lastly, thank you all for the work you've been doing. The work you're going to be doing on this and the work you're going to continue doing. So, thank you. Um, so we're going to be concluding this here momentarily. I forgot to mention at the beginning because of how we went through and. Basically did roll call by doing introductions. Councilmember Hamel's not here this evening. He's the only council member who's not here. Uh, so to the council members in the room, unless there's objection, because he did mention last week he would not be here this week. Unless there's objection, we'll consider his absence as excused. Seeing no objection means excuse. Right. Um, the next thing is that our, we do need an executive session with all of you for five hours. So we do have a need for an executive session for the council members, me and a couple of staff members. It's uh, under property acquisition person, RCW. Forty two point thirty point one ten subsection one, subsection little B. Um, Deborah, do you think we can start with five minutes? Okay, so we're gonna start with five minutes. Uh, we will reconvene out here as the council if nothing else, uh, you know, potential action, if nothing else, do adjourn. Uh, for those of you that remain online, uh, or who are here in this room, uh, if I do any extensions, I will announce the extensions to Johnage. And you will save them online and in here. And so we are now uh, gonna go into executive session. In that room?
Yes.
Okay, beginning at eight twenty three PM for initial five minutes. We are in the executive session. Okay, we're back out of the executive session. We have no further action this evening unless there's objection. We are adjourned. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.